Wool bubble.
I just hit go live.
It's like pulling in my mouth.
Boy straw.
You can see the tear in my eye, it looks like I'm being forced against my will.
This thumbnail is gonna be fire.
Lit fire flames, baby.
Study with me.
You should do like a nerdy one.
A calculator, oh.
How about that?
Why are you, why is your smile so like painful?
Showing all, all the teeths.
Try like a picture of me, okay.
Ooh, I like this one.
Yeah, I'm gonna take my horse to the old town. Ride till I can't go farther.
Come right, you can't do a thumbnail up and down, it has to be to the side.
Okay, let's do this, old town road, no, that's not, that's not gonna fit. I don't know if that's conducive to a good study session.
Uh, it's time to study.
Last week, Lance came. Oh, yes. Good morning.
He looks like I'm crying.
Oh, nutso. Does it work sideways at all on like one person? Oh, that does.
Happy Pride Month. Except it puts uh eyelashes on my lower lash.
Oh, yeah. Last time I tried to turn it sideways, it put mascara on my like nose. And I was like, okay, well, that's, that's excessive.
Look, it put the bear upside down on me.
Oh, sad.
What makes it think that my face is upside down, that's rude. Probably cuz it's turned that way.
I don't know what to tell you, what I, you can do little.
Two babies. A baby and an old lady.
Thanks. Where'd my baby face go? It's not working at all. My hair is still, that's my hair is still.
Oh, she's a cute little baby.
If it's not, yeah, there's no way to like make it, that's kinda like, I mean, we can make that a thumbnail, but it's.
Learning science today.
That's freaky up. Well, this is fun. Yeah, I wanna take my horse to the old town road, I'm gonna. Did you take that baby pic?
No, I took a sparkly pic.
Okay. I looked at it for a specific reason, I don't remember, oh, I have a problem. Out down, crowds down, living like a rock star. Spend a lot of money on a brand new guitar.
It's the best I can do for him.
I'm super dumb. Baby's gotta have a diamond rings and Fendi sports bras. Fendi sports bra? That's a thing. It's a habit, her bad habit is sports bras, specific to the Fendi brand, how many do they sell there? These sports bras just Fendi make?
They cost eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Oh.
I'm just making that up, I don't know.
I was like, okay, I guess, yeah.
Living like a rock star, Fendi sports bra, de 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 de.
Does he say Fendi sports cars? No, wait, Fendi doesn't make cars.
Well, they make a sports bra. It's three hundred and forty-five dollars.
Okay. This is what I could do with, I didn't remember, we only did like five or six closes there.
Yeah, I feel like this is fine.
Oh, like the last one we did, right? It was rough, I looked really rough in all of them. Like wind blown to shit.
Alright, that works.
Do I, is it okay?
Yeah, I think so.
Baby's gotta have a diamond rings.
So it's five, I feel like that's pretty good.
I'm like, it's enough, it's not my favorite, but it's like a.
Oh, five. Books.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That kills me. That's funny.
Oh, cooking simulator. I have trouble turning down a deal, oh my god, Throm sent me a game called Cooking Simulator.
Mmm, fun.
He said.
Don't you think it's about time for a new phone?
Playing this and thought you might enjoy it, also it's on sale and I have trouble turning down a deal, lol. I was like, love you, Throm.
How's your new vacuum going? Have you tried it out yet?
I actually haven't. Uh, Connor did though.
Oh, good.
They, I was like, remember I like raced home to do pirates and then I was live for the next like twelve hours? Yeah. Connor got home and I was like, new house toy. He like took it out and put it together and. God knows stress I've been through all that, I'm like a mob, but I'll keep on running. Just like a roll on back to the old town road, I'm gonna ride. Why is that in our heads this morning?
This is a cowboy uh filter.
Oh, yeah. But that game sounded really funny you were playing last night, that's funny. Balls, where did I save that too? Check, check, who's ready for some morning studies? Why isn't it exporting? Um, just got asked to come into the office today.
On Saturday? What's going on?
Honestly.
I wonder if he doesn't have anyone else to trust.
Probably not. It's just the worst weekend in the world.
Yeah.
It's been happening a lot though this weekend, like a lot of people are like, let's do this, let's do this, and then it's like, I can't, I'm.
You want that to?
Finals, what?
That's the devil testing you.
Well, it's not like he's asking me to go to like a naked orgy rave.
I know, it's the most innocuous things, but it's the things that pull you away from your studying. Testing you.
This might be the world testing me.
It always happens that way though, it always happens that way. You know what I mean?
It's like as soon as I sit down, I try to make a schedule. A thousand people need things, like yesterday, I'm live and Tyler's like, how do you help with his bookies, I'm like, I'm gonna drive to Kaiser right now. Tell me you have a bookcase. Like, I'm sorry that you're stressed out, but that's not like the number one thing on my list.
For sure.
I would love to help you tomorrow, I don't know, three o'clock when I'm.
If you hadn't had a schedule and you weren't live, you're just kinda dinking around, no one ever needs you. It's when you're like already busy, like focus on doing something else.
Yeah, that's one check, that's one number I need to.
Seriously, it always goes that way.
Also, this thumbnail won't save, I don't understand what's happening.
Corrupted.
The picture was so good.
There's no like. The coloring on this camera is like really ugly to me. Do you notice anything weird?
Morning, MRG, hi, Lex, buy Ken's a coffee, she deserves it, I didn't sneak it, I'm ready.
I already did buy her coffee.
She did buy me coffee, oh, that's right, I transferred some money already, I sent you money, I didn't do it though. Here's what we can do, go to applications, watch this. Um, it could, here's the, here's the camera settings right here. It is on autofocus, which I never do because that's just abysmal. But they have settings here, oh, white balance is on auto, did that fix anything for you just now?
I'm like on a delay on my, on my picture.
Watch this, this is where it was, this is where it's at now.
Yeah, that certainly helped.
Was that, okay, so the, sometimes it resets, so the white balance must be reset, do you wanna adjust anything, brightness color, color intensity, white balance?
I guess it's over there now.
Is it better now?
Yeah.
I can't smash a filter on it, we can only do that on the phone, which I think is what's cheap. If you're streaming from your phone, you can put on a like sexified filter. But I'm sitting here at the desk with a webcam, which means I have control of the stream and the timer. You can't put any filters on, you just have to sit here with your plain face and hope the world accepts you for who you are.
I don't trust the world.
Ride until I can no more, my heart's in the background. Holsters in the background, yeah? Oh, horse stock, isn't that what he says?
I don't know.
Don't care, I love that. Dude, Dre started saying love that for you. I stole that from you a week ago.
Trendsetter over here.
And now she's saying it, I like, she tweeted it and I was like, oh no. Oh my god. Like, we are toxic AF. All of us, not you, I guess, cuz it's your idea, but, or whatever.
I'm used to having younger sisters, just the life I live.
Slut. Oh, my god. I have coffee, it's right here.
It's all good, is this really number fifteen? You know what that means? You've been, you've probably stated an average of like, well, you should look it up, but like, how many study sessions have you completed in fifteen? Like streams, you know what I mean? At least thirty, cuz you've done no more that are less than um, an hour, or like one session.
Hi, Jamie. Well, yeah, minimum of one, most of them have been at least two. Almost all have been three or four. A couple that were like five, six, seven, yeah, mostly like threes, mostly threes.
I don't care.
Sit on top of your head, Ken, a migraine, that's what's there.
Bird nest.
This looks hella good, what are you talking about? Listen, big hair is sexy, if I was born in the eighties, you guys would love this.
Oh, you weren't born in the eighties, I'm like, oh my god, I was born in the eighties.
I'm not like if I lived through the eighties, I guess, that wasn't meant as like a weird age dig, I'm sorry.
God, what a dig.
I was like, maybe I saved it in my documents, only thing saved in documents is a document called to ascertain the formula of an ion compound, like, fucking nerd.
All I heard was two S.
Right? What a fucking nerd. Wasn't your documents, oh, just like a chemical project, ten page report on bullshit, don't even, don't even trip. I legit, it won't save, like look, export as Alexa where downloads, that's what I always do to get my thumbnail, and right now it's not.
It's saying that it's too ugly. Just try to take another one and.
Ooh, there's something, I'll take it, what did it save to, it does not downloads. I don't know where it saves.
I got a seed in my tooth.
From what?
My very.
I was like, I didn't have a seed, seed didn't talk about. God knows stress I've been through all that. Jenner, hi, how are you? Hi, Jamie. A bird nests where birds had a riot. What? Oh.
Yeah, they had a bird nest, but they partied real hard last night, not like me, I went straight, I wanna go straight to bed after stream, but I went late in bed after stream, couldn't fall asleep for a while. Finally did fall asleep, then woke up this morning with a pounding headache.
How about you study and I'll put on a pillow right here and take a little nap.
You only get a fuck off if you were hungover, but since you're not.
What, that's an excuse I get to use? Trying to get wasted tonight.
You're trying to get in a dental school tonight. Yeah, I mean, you know what I mean, like every day.
No, I legit haven't had a drink in a week because school, but then Dre today was like podcast, six o'clock, we're doing drinking games. And I was like, okay, well, I'm gonna bring some ciders, cuz I'm not trying to get fucked up, cuz I have a Procter D A T Sunday.
Mm-hmm, you got big business tomorrow.
Yeah, I got big business, I was like, okay, I'll get some cider.
You at least have to like be up and alert, but when I start the total science section, you will have ninety minutes to yourself, like off camera. So you can either study your own self, or, but I like need the room to be just like a test, like empty and quiet.
Empty, I understand.
So you can either study elsewhere or.
Um, my, my, original plan was just to study in the other office room, but I didn't like.
Or just stream in the other office room.
To what?
I don't know, it's like a weird time of day, so.
Like to Twitch?
Yeah.
Study stream to Twitch, I don't think that plays.
No, I don't mean studies from Twitch, other, regular stream.
Oh, well.
I think we had, we had like maybe talked about that, just cuz I'd be like over here.
That's true, that's true. I mean, yeah, we'll see.
It's whatever you feel like doing at nine thirty in the morning.
So you have a ninety minute session and then a ten minute break? And then another ninety minutes?
I'll pull it up right here.
It's five hours, so like I know.
The test total is four and a half hours of exam time.
Yeah.
But there's two fifteen minute breaks in there somewhere. So I'll show you, it's right, like at the beginning, they kind of just go through the test itself. Let me see, okay.
It's killing me right now, it is, I can't even. I don't know why.
It consists of four sections, two hundred and eighty multiple choice questions. Four timed sections. All the sciences, then the perceptual ability, then reading, then math, the quantitative reasoning. So, starting out, ninety minutes for one hundred multiple choice questions subdivided into biology, general chemistry, and organic chemistry. So you have ninety minutes, that's the first section, then. Sixty minutes for the ninety multiple choice questions. Uh, for the PAT, then another sixty minutes for fifty questions over the reading section, then forty-five minutes for math. It's, you know, it's not, look, this is what it is, twenty, twenty-two point five percent algebra.
Oh, okay.
Fifteen percent numerical calculation, that's like.
Early entry calculus?
It's like using foil and stuff, you remember that? Algebra one, algebra two, geometry.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
What is, seven point five conversions. Conversions is like, if you have a fraction to a power over a fraction to a power, like how to.
Yeah, geometry, problems, stats, conversions, algebra, what?
Word problems, like if the car's going fifty miles, blah, 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 like that kind of word problems, twenty-five percent.
Okay, good, that's easier. Phew, god, I hated that, pick D for all answers, she'll get good score, no, but your instructor come up to you afterwards and ask you what you're willing to do for a good grade. According to your dream.
Ds, interesting, so.
You really wanted the D, huh?
Really wanted the D.
Now I joked, um. I'm gonna show you that tweet, I joked online about, um, oh, Nick said something about a dream where nothing ever comes true or something, and I was like, well, I had a dream that. My instructor asked me what I'm gonna do for an A, and apparently in my dreams, I'm way more of a go getter.
Select.
I, I was very much down to do whatever it takes to get an A in my, in my dream, and then he responded with. Me, to my professor, hello, I'd like to trade sex for good grade, my seventy year old professor says, but you can see your grade aligning, you're already doing better than one hundred percent in the course.
Aw, come on.
Being flink look, professor, blank look. Yes. Oh, and it cracks me up. Behave yourself ladies, there's children present, this is a Christian Minecraft channel. And Alexa's right, the devil's been testing me. It is, it is, Jenner, you remembered. Today at three o'clock, it is sloth day, slackoff. Cory's gonna be here at two forty-five, we're gonna mob around in the car. Dreamy's a loose gal, she's really down to get that A, let me tell you, she's really, really down to get an A. And I asked Connor, I was like, so is it cheating if it's the only way I can get into dental school? And he was like, kinda yeah, and I was like, okay, kinda yeah, there's some wiggle room. The thing is. Sleeping with someone to get an A, I don't understand why that's worth that, one A? Like your GPA consists of two hundred credits, how is it worth it? To like give up your entire integrity for one A, I don't understand, I mean, no judgment to the other people, I guess, to have done that, cuz like, listen, desperate times people, but. I don't get that for myself, like, it's one A, there's no way it's worth it, like statistically, if it was like, sleep with someone to get a graduate degree. Then that makes sense, or to get into dental school, that makes sense, but sleeping with someone for one A? How's that worth it, it's one term, you have to get, oh, you have to sleep with a, with another thirty people to get your bachelor's degree, like the fuck that?
Thirty, that's hardly anything.
Well, four credit class, one hundred ninety credits for a B S B A, you sleep with somebody to get an A, well, you're gonna have to sleep with thirty more guys to actually get the degree.
Guys or.
Whichever, both, so if it was sleep with somebody to get your, your degree, that I could see, I could see that.
Would you cheat on your spouse?
It was cheating, and he said, kinda yeah.
Kinda yeah?
There's some wiggle room there.
Wow.
It was based on the dream I had, you guys, I don't know that anyone in the, in, I mean, when a professor's gonna hit on somebody, it's gonna be like, somebody who's obviously. Pretty slut, yeah, it's like he's not gonna risk his reputation by hitting on me.
Aw, come on, you say you're so short there.
Nah, there's no way somebody looks at me and thinks, oh, that bitch will suck dick for As, like, there's no way. I need to change my look though, you're right, that's the problem, I'm changing it up. Pokemon Go has more days than patron saints, yeah, one a month, fam.
I tried community day already, no GPS signal, so that didn't work for me.
Oh my god, you missed it? Well, it's three to six, everybody's set time, beam me what time is it for you, it's already past three then.
Oh my god, it totally is.
Yeah.
But you didn't get to do it?
Same with MRG, this, MRG stayed up yesterday, right, and then like when I went pirating, he pirated me the whole time, and I was up till four, three, four? Though his time it was like noon.
Noon, yeah, so he just had to wake up really early.
He's still been awake, he was like, I took, he said, he said he's gonna take a nap, so he took a nap. And now he's here again, it's eight o'clock at night. Cause you get to play Pokemon.
Be surprised at what people think of you when you walk by.
I mean, I wouldn't, I mean, I would be, I mean, you know, like, like people don't surprise me, I guess. Twenty-nine hours, good grief. Oh, that is like, great photos.
Do you look like a fifteen year old boy right now? Time for some skateboarding.
I don't know that fifteen year old boys talk like that.
Well, what I need is a hair tie so I can get this out of the way and I gotta do something too, oh, I got a, I got a clipie. Oh, just lean back and let it happen. Title of my first porno. Lean back and let it happen.
So you're not really invested in this first porno then? You're just kinda.
I'm not really trying to make a splash, if that's what you're asking.
Oh.
Or maybe I am.
Yuck!
So are we gonna just start our first study session at twelve then?
Yep, I'm already poised down for three. Start now, let's start now.
Well, I still, I actually have to do this, so I'm fine, like waiting just a little bit.
Okay.
I just was like trying to beat on it. Hey, Talon, hello, everybody, I don't think I said, said hello yet, happy Saturday. Hashtag sexy.
What, you don't like my hashtags? Hashtag Ken's hair. Flickable. Just gotta do a free switch game.
Hashtag Lex hair. What's wrong with that?
Hashtag Poga Lex.
I can't do it either. Hashtag Lexi, hey, that's, that's.
You've never been, you've never gone by that nickname.
Like sexy, oh, but you're cuz you're Kenzie, I'll just.
Saturday be like.
Sateks, Satterix.
Sexa.
Sexa. Love it, love that for me, sexa, hashtag sexa.
Love that for you, you guys noticed that I started saying love that for me a lot more, and then like the other day Dre tweeted it out too, like she's got it, like, I was like, wow, Lex, so we stole that from you, sorry.
No, but I stole it from Trisha Paytas.
Just realized, I started saying it and then just saw Dre saying it too, and I'm like, damn, we all saying the same thing now again.
We all saying the same thing.
Ah, nothing changes, I love that for us.
Yeah, it's so easy, it just rips off the tongue now.
Rips, I didn't mean to say that word.
Just rips off the tongue. That's so aggressive. I'm, see, I'm much more of a morning person, you don't get a day, sorry, Lex, what do you mean I don't get a day? Watch this. Pull that, pull in the Pocahontas card, look.
Sexa.
That feels so freaking good. You want some? Oh, like two degrees cooler now. Let's all sexa. Everybody waying chung tonight, oh, I already had a pen out. What are you doing, getting caught up in the Twitterverse?
No, just checking out Jennifer Star's latest post from four minutes ago, check this baby out, do I have, do I have mama?
Oh, I know, I know, jawbreakers.
Jawbreakers for sure.
Do you have a mirror, a big mirror?
No, I have a little mirror.
That mirror over there?
This size.
I'm gonna go sit by your little mirror.
Oh, that giant mirror right there on the wall, yeah, I can.
You put that there, so you can look at your booty on the side.
Yeah, I don't know that this is my best angle. It's like, seen a lot happening, seated chair side. In keeping with theme with our earlier discussion, what theme, which one from yesterday? I guess your turn, your time today. Oh, Dreamy's a loose gal, that earlier discussion? I'm sorry, I'm really out of it, man, I'm dead tired, my head's pounding. My hair looks sexy though, let's get, let's get one thing straight. Oh, yeah, sitting with your professor for an A, sexa. Sex A.
Just call me sexa, Professor McGurty.
McGurter.
McGurter.
Not just cuz Gert's my new email, like McGurt.
McGurty.
Yeah.
Professor Smithson.
Why does that have to be so sensual?
I know we don't have class today, Professor, but that's cuz it's Saxa.
What's this Keanu Reeves' joke going around? Like Keanu Reeves wears armor, Keanu Greaves.
Lonely and he has nobody in his life. But he's beautiful.
We've been looking for a third for a while. Keanu, you down? DTF Keanu?
Uh, and then Trisha Paytas also made a video saying, okay, fine. I'll date you, Keanu Reeves.
How do people still pop up in my feed? Let's sex Alexa. Professor Saxa, teacher of human biology, wink. Be a teacher?
I'll teach young college students the art of lovemaking.
Karma Saxa. See, Lex knows where I was going with that. She's way more with it in the mo- like, I know it's not super early morning, but she's way more with it in the mornings. And I'm out of it today. So please direct all jokes. I'm gonna take the oral part of sex ed. Part of sex.
Only oral exams, wink.
Lucy, you better hurry up, you got seven minutes.
Until what?
Twelve o'clock.
Until study starts?
Does Professor Saxa take international college students? Jamie's asking.
Like as a transfer student?
Yes, probably. Jamie's too far away.
That's why we do uh. Phone, over the phone exams. I'll always be young and beautiful, even when I'm sixty.
Yesterday Penn, okay, I don't know what we were talking about, but yesterday Penn sent me the link to Young, oh, does somebody send me a stupid commercial for like Yaf Gert? Some kind of yogurt drink? You don't need to, it doesn't matter.
Just filming it and watching.
And um. And then I, and then I was like, that's terrible, that song's gonna suck my hell all day and Penn's like, I got you, and you sent me a link to Young and Beautiful and I was like, I love this song, you know? Set to Captain America. Like his whole story with his girl.
Still does love her and she's not young and beautiful anymore. Yeah, but did you see Endgame though?
Yeah, I don't understand how that ties together, but fuck it, I guess.
Like the very end, you know what I'm talking about?
Of course, one hundred percent. So he went back in time, he lived his life with her, which. How did, I didn't know he could age, first of all. Second of all.
Want me to sleep with your professor to get you an A?
Sure, and she is a lady, so show her a good time, please. Use your accent on her, it's fine.
More of this.
Oh, sorry, Matt hasn't seen it, oh my god, you still haven't seen it? Matt, get out of here.
Okay, I won't spoil it.
I just ruined it probably.
Well, I'm just talking to think about it. Don't listen, don't listen! She's a spoiling queen.
You shut your face about Ed Kim. I'm sorry, I didn't know, everyone has seen it.
Are you really so cold that you have to wear a scarf with your sweatshirt in here?
You good?
I spr- I sprayed this. Here.
Of course it does, why do you have to blow air on it too?
I'm helping.
I'm helping. Shake your hands to draw your nails and it doesn't do anything.
Yeah, people draw their nails. Hmm, no, it's, it's not how that, it's not how this works.
Everyone's like, oh yeah, just blowing your nails, like it literally does not change anything, like it's the heat, not the air.
This is just the reaction of the polish with the oxygen.
True that too, yes.
So that's why they think that. I loved when Aunt Min.
Thanks Jenner for breaking it down, just in case I ruined something. He'll know for, now he won't know which is the true thing. I love that too, Jenner, that was the best part of the movie. Spoilers, you guys.
Like when Batman saved the day. Did you guys see the new Batman's gonna be? It was released today, I guess.
I forgot. I saw it, I don't remember who it is right now. Jean Goul.
Burr.
Testin.
Robert Testin.
Charles Testin isn't.
Robert.
De Niro.
Robert De Niro.
Oh no, Pattinson, oh no, I knew about that, oh no.
Wow, you gave it away, MRG with your comment about the Twilight con- that could have been anyway. Robert, oh, I forgot her name, I was gonna say next to.
Roberto? Rajon Ghosn's the name of the bad dude in Batman. Okay, so yes, I did hear about that and yes, I don't understand.
And yes, I don't understand.
Yes, I do not.
Yep, this is me, I have my makeup in a plastic sack, just the kind of person I am. I don't know why I feel like I shouldn't say that, it's just my traveling sack. Dude, what are you studying today?
I put on that music yesterday. Yesterday I used Spotify as like. Ocean Sound Sleep Playlist, right? Spotify. Two of the songs on there are copyrighted. I don't know which two.
Are you freaking kidding me?
Yeah, I mean, like the video is still viewable, it's just two songs that are like monetization, blah blah.
Okay, well.
I can't edit the video.
Well, what are we supposed to do? Those from yesterday? Like what do we do then?
Well, no, I mean, like what I could do is I could download it, edit it manually and then re-upload it. I don't wanna do that though, we streamed it.
So what, can you do that afterwards?
I'm gonna let these one hundred and eighty views. Just get copyrighted. It's still seeable, it's just monetization, uh, like the two of the random. Spotify's music playlist.
Yeah, I guess I wouldn't worry about that.
So dumb, look, Ocean Waves for Sleep. Like who's the bitch that copyrighted? Beach waves and soothing brown noise.
Go to the one that's just eleven hours of the same beach, you you tried to sniff it up with like fancy beach.
No, I didn't, it's just that YouTube, you have to have the app open the whole time or it stops playing, whereas Spotify you don't, you just play it and put it in the background, that's why. They make a search thirteen-hour ocean. I don't know, it's like a thing. It's like I can't put it on my laptop because my headset is playing my.
Ready to get started in two minutes?
Ready, Freddy.
What am I doing today? What are you doing today? Do you still have bio that you need to finish?
Yes, I have one more lecture. Almost finished yesterday, but I look here, I'm at right here.
Oh yeah, I still have note cards to make, actually.
I wanted to finish more and I literally finished another session, but like it's just, there's just time. So I'm almost done with this. The bios final is the first final, so like I wanna focus that before, not focus before, but.
Make sure that's done.
Yeah, I have spent several days doing chem too though. Already. So I'm like halfway through that content.
I want you to do really good in chem because for me. Chem comes right to Ochem and that is the majority of what goes to biochem, like bio is just a piece, a piece of it. That's why I'm like, oh, chem is like super important.
It just begs the question, fucking why? No clue with Rock Patterson, YouTube, you can manage if you pay for premium, but you think I got money to pay for YouTube premium, who do you think I am?
When are your finals anyway?
Starbucks.
When are your finals anyway?
Tuesday and Wednesday.
I don't have a final, I just have a DAT test.
We're gonna practice Proctor DAT exam on Sunday and then she has the actual exam next month or something?
June twenty-four at eight thirty AM in Eugene, Oregon.
Nice try, Rocky, nice try. This scarf is two years old, okay? This is where I'm at.
Who's talking about your scarf?
Nobody. He said, I think you're loaded and you still owe him money anyway.
Oh yeah.
Listen, I I don't go shopping, that's not because I don't like shopping, although I don't like shopping.
I love shopping. I buy you stuff though.
That's the only way I get new stuff.
Bought you a new vacuum, that was fun.
That was for my birthday.
No, your housekeeper was for your birthday.
Oh yeah, I thought the vacuum was Katie's present to me for my birthday.
She took it back.
You gotta get that sixty bucks out of her.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, Matt, I posted a schedule in Discord, are you in the Discord by chance? Oh wait, I can't talk about this, it's twelve o'clock. Ding ding ding.
Get started, everybody. Bye.
Forty-five minutes and counting. Session one, begin. Session one, begin! Session one, begin! Okay. So if you were given this equation. It appears this balance the equation occurring in basic solution. Now the balancing, I feel pretty okay about, it's. You separate the oxidation and the reduction into two separate half reactions and then you need to balance each half with respect to mass. Using H two O, H positive and OH negative.
Mm-hmm.
That's all fine.
Okay.
How can you tell in the end which one is oxidation, which one is reduction?
Okay.
Right here they've assigned this positive seven to magnesium or manganese.
Wait, you mean how can you tell what the charge is?
I, so, so this one is oxidized, right? It goes from a negative charge to a positive by one.
Or do you, how do you know which? I would, I wouldn't say that.
Okay, what'd you say?
I would say.
Yeah, break that down for me, cause that's, I'm getting confused by what they're, what they're showing with those positives and negatives with oxidation states.
I would.
It's been a second since I looked at those, I guess, cause I'm.
Okay. This is what I always go back to, because it's, it's the only thing that gives me context when it comes to this.
Oh my gosh, really, the same thing?
Mm-hmm. So, this person here, that's, it's a negative charge and he's going, he's not getting a positive charge, he's gaining. Excuse me, he's losing an electron. Cause he's going from a negative charge to a neutral charge.
Yes.
So there's a, there's a loss of electrons. Which means it's oxidation.
So anytime you run into anything oxidation related, you write leogyr down?
I do.
Okay.
If it has anything to do with like elec. Electro or like nodes or potential or whatever, then I add this. A and C. Leo is a jerk. It's like what they tell you. Because this is loss of electrons is oxidation at the anode.
Yes.
Versus gain of electrons is reduction, which happens at the cathode. And I always, I just, I always go back to that because it's. It's a pretty easy way to make sure that you're doing, that it's right.
He is, makes a lot more sense to me than this magnesium, what is this minus plus seven deal?
So, okay. Okay.
What is that?
So, let's see. Do you understand why that's reduction though?
Well, it looks like he. Went from a. Plus seven minus two is still five. To two. He gained electrons.
Okay, I, I think the reason why that's happening is, okay, so you've got. This and you've got an O four and overall it has a negative charge. So what that means is, so oxygen is gonna be. Is a negative two?
Do you need a P R table? I do.
So oxygen sits at negative two. That's.
It's, it's positive one, two, three, zero, one, negative one, two, three, right? So oxygen's negative two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, it's negative two meaning it's got plus eight. Nine, ten, to meet that ten, it's like.
They're two away, right, right, right.
It's two away, so, normal oxygen will sit at negative two, so. There's four of them, so that means oxygen is at a negative eight at this point. Now to make.
The entire rest.
To make that thing, you're gonna need a positive eight.
Then why'd they put negative two right there and right there?
Hold on, hold on.
Okay, okay.
But, what they're telling you is that the overall charge, so this would make the overall charge a zero.
Right, it's a negative, so there's one extra electron somewhere.
Meaning, not that there's one extra electron, but there's one less. So like, how would you make this a negative one? You'd make that a plus seven minus eight equals. Negative one.
Okay.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's why those are there. Okay, so.
What does the two stand for right here?
Minus two. Like oxygen per is negative two per.
Is that what they're saying when they put that there?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. And then the seven is for the whole of that, because there's just one.
Cause it's just the one of them, yeah.
And this one.
So then over here, the reason why it hasn't, it has, it has a neutral charge, so it's telling you has, it has neutral.
Only has two oxygens.
And oxygen is negative two per, so you have a negative four. Meaning if it's neutral, then that's gonna be a plus four minus four equals zero. So it's telling you over here that. Manganese went from a plus seven to a plus four. So it actually gained three electrons. So it gained electrons, meaning that's reduction.
Right, well they call it a reduction because the value goes down because it gained electrons, so it's more negative.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yes.
Okay, I just need to remember Leo's a jerk.
You just really do.
You keep bringing it every time I have a question, literally, you write that down.
Because it. Because that's why.
Like it works every time, this is so dumb, okay, moving on.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, no, that's a good one.
Yeah, I ended up, I ended up branching into chemistry, I actually have like a chem uh homework assignment, like they do like. Pre-final test or whatever, and I forgot I had to do that, yes, do tomorrow, so I'm switched over to chem.
Oh, okay.
Tell it, Leo's a jerk, yeah. It's L E O G E R C, stands for losing an uh electron means oxidation. And. G E R C jerk, not really the word, you're gaining an electron means reduction. At the cathode?
Mm-hmm. Like what talks more about like. I don't, I don't know. There's, there's another section that talks about like using electro. This stuff. Anyways, don't focus on that, that's not important.
Is this? Um, I know you printed this off a minute ago, but.
Okay.
Cause I'm trying to have a charge. A corresponds to the flow of.
So this is what. This is what we're talking about, so anode and cathode.
Right.
Okay.
We did this in lab, actually.
Okay.
Um. A correspond, the A is the. What, what's A? It must mean this whole figure.
Hmm.
In a whole take, so this is the question down here. Because an electron has a charge of such and such coulombs. One A corresponds. To. The flow.
The flow of.
Is there anything before it that has to do with it? Just this whole problem. About. Balancing the oxidation reduction reaction. Okay, what corresponds to that, the flow of that one A? Is the charge? Is this just something I need to have memorized, what does the picture have to do, I guess, with it? Cause this seems separate.
The pictures. I think the picture's showing the movement of electrons from here. And then like. The salt bridge, what the salt bridge is doing is like reconstituting like the. Like the, the gradient, or like the, the, not pressure, but like, you know, cause this is replenishing this with. Positive. Charge.
Yes.
And this replen, it's like a chemical reaction to maintain this environment so that current.
Well, it.
Like pure current flows through here.
It's like a, it's like, it's, it's like, if this was a sodium potassium pump, this would be the. Non-gated leak channel.
Okay.
When you say that it's like allow, yeah, it's allowing the other excess charges to flow through to equalize so that the.
Yeah, like it. It ca- it carries. Yeah, I don't know how to say it, that it makes sense equally like for the both of us, but. It, it keeps the charges separate and then allows the pure like electron component, like the power. To flow in that, like, cause it's that, that E minus is just the minus off of there, so it like pulls it off of there and then it like recycles it and. Keeps this environment to where it can pull electrons out of it.
Would you say that A is accurate?
Electrons flow from the more electron.
Negatively charged electrode to the more positively charged electrode.
Mm-hmm.
Cause it's flowing in this way.
Yes, that's what I would say.
Okay.
And here, I think here is like the result of it, two electrons gained by each. Copper ion reduced.
Copper two or some.
Two electrons lost. Uh by each zinc atom that's been oxidized.
Okay.
Well, think about of the anode, loss of electrons. At the anode.
Gaining electrons, what's the flow of electrons? Gaining electrons at the cathode, yeah. Yeah, so, like I just need to remember Leo's a jerk. Oh, summarizing the potential, yeah. Electro potential of a standard, I don't know, there's exactly zero electricity, half cell, the tendency, and the reduction is positively charged. Cell potential in the electrochemical cell, is the difference between the electrode potentials of the cathode and the anode?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Positive spirit for spontaneous reactions, definitely. Yeah.
That's definitely something.
Yeah, that's come up several times, yeah.
But if you know that concept. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah, this specific chem course seems kind of like, well, you know, I talked to you about it, like I'm taking it in a different format than last term. And like. Lab was a breeze, lab practical exam. Blazed through that, no problem. It's like, I can't help but think like, wow, I wish my whole class was in that format.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. That is a twitch follow.
Oh, you know what, I have a a um subbie for you. Should I go log into it?
Oh, like prime?
Yeah.
Oh, that's funny.
What are you doing now? I'll wait for break.
Whichever. Okay, help, helps us out here, so
Oh, I always forget how Twitch does that.
I just mute the site all the time. So this is the, ignore my scribble at the bottom, this is the equation right here.
Okay.
Now, this one has a negative charge, over here, the NO has a neutral, so he lost an electron. So he'd be oxidized, but here, alumina was a neutral charge, now the alumina was a three plus, he lost three electrons. So he's also oxidized, where's the reduction?
Okay, so I think what's happening here is, so oxygen you know is a, is a two minus.
Yes.
So
Can you start over? A L plus N O three minus plus four H positive. A L three plus plus N O plus two H two O. Yes, oxygen is a two minus, so this puppy dog would be a negative six, which means this has to be a positive five. Okay.
Yeah.
Now this guy, there's only one O two, so he's just a negative two. So he must just be a positive two.
So what happened to him?
Of the the nitrogen? Not the oxygen? Oh, well, the nitrogen, is that the one you're focusing on? Oh, well, okay, so the nitrogen, he gained three electrons. Oh, so he's the reduction. Okay.
Okay, so you could always check your work by like, what is N O three, like draw this for me. Draw what that compound looks like, just practice it, it's like how would you make it? And then the overall molecule has a negative one charge, so like where are your dot, where, where your electrons gonna be like, let's fill it in, right, so
All have um
So an a nitrogen, right, but how many bonds does a nitrogen want to have?
Five. No, I'm sorry, they all want to have
Three bonds.
Wait, why do you say that?
Because he wants to make three connections, he wants to share three electrons to get to ten.
Okay, but he comes with five.
Yeah, he has five electrons, so he's got one, two, three, and then usually you see nitrogen with a pair. And then he's a negative charge.
Yes.
Well, the overall molecule has a one minus, so like an oxygen with one bond, what's his charge? If he, he, he makes only one bond. If he only gets to share one additional It, it moves him from a negative two to a negative one because he's not sharing an electron, so he's made one bond, but he's got cause how many electrons does he have, six, so
Right, but he still has his two, four, six, eight, so he's not gonna be
Two, four, six, eight, but that still leaves him with a negative one charge. So that doesn't work, like for your overall charge, so what that means is that two of these oxygens are going to need to be in a double bond with nitrogen.
Okay, so
Or it's actually just one of them. It's actually just one of them, so he, so he stays, let's see, he has a negative charge. He has a negative charge, now he's neutral, but now he's got a plus, so you still end up with, so you have a negative one.
Well, this being a neutral oh, he's got a plus, cause he's got one extra. Would he still have his lone pair?
No. Now he's got, cause he has five electrons.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So one, two, three, four.
But now he has four bonds. No, he still has three, one's a double though.
Yeah, wait a second, so he actually still has, so he's gonna have one, I guess, and with a positive anyways, my point is like
I'd give him nine surrounding, that wouldn't work.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Okay, so when you see let's see. There's for this molecule because that's pretty unstable, it's like, it's a thing, but it's also like a s- it's, it wants to react. So what's that called, nitric? N O three. It's, it's got three resonance structures, cause it doesn't stay just in that, it stays like it's equally all equal.
Right, well, the oxygen, the double bonded oxygen could be anywhere.
It could be any of them, yeah, so basically if, if you were to see, receive a question, I actually was on a test at some point, cause I remembered it specifically. Draw the, the rock, like how many resonance structures and then draw them for here, so you just know this because that's not gonna stay like that, like it doesn't want that charge, it's gonna be constantly like rearranging like within space, like it's just gonna be that, so if, if let's see if that makes us feel better, I guess, cause he's got one, two, three, four.
I don't know the relevance to this, this, this part right here
Just because, because this, this is different, like this goes to this.
Actually, it goes just to this, I think.
So overall, the, it's a zero charge. It's a neutral charge. Guess I guess I was just trying
So is the So is the so oxygen re- uh oxidation and reduction isn't specific to
Yeah, like let's forget
The oxygen at all, it's the, it's the molecule connected.
No, not necessarily, but you just
When I looked at it, I was like, oh, well, the O itself, well, no, because I would look at the whole molecule and I wasn't really balancing the whole molecule, I was only comparing the oxygens.
Okay.
But, okay, for example, in the A L
Charge is for the overall molecule.
Right, uh, yeah, I think that's why I got tripped up, so this one is aluminum, and this one's aluminum three positive. So this one is the oxidation.
Yeah.
Cause he
He lost
He lost three electrons.
Yeah. Or has like a deficit of three electrons.
Okay, 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 that's what I was getting tripped up on. I just didn't want, like I didn't wanna look at this first, but yeah, it's he's the oxidation and he's the reduction, and you, oh, I guess, so they're piggybacking the okay, so when you're drawing the half reactions to enable you to balance an oxidation reduction reaction you hold on to the hydrogen and the, on the water, over on this one, you you don't have any to start, but they say to balance a redox, follow the half reaction method. But add an extra step to neutralize the acid with O H. So you assign the state, separate them into the two half reactions, then you balance it based on oh, you balance the elements, then you balance oxygen by adding water, then you balance the hydrogens that you just added by adding H positive, then you neutralize the H positive by adding enough O H negative to neutralize the H. So then you've got and then you have to balance each half with respect to charge. And then you balance the electrons and then you put them back together, it's like okay. Like working through that, it's like, I just can't be like, it was, they added this step of neutralizing. Add water, add H positive, then add a H negative, then balance by make the electrons balance, then bal- like you balance the elements.
I thought looking at the actual structure would be like a failsafe, would be like a here's a way to like check it by like actually just drawing it out, so you could see it, but I think we got kinda like stopped by there when we had already answered the question, but I, yeah, no, I mean Though I think, I think you should be able to draw it out and see like where, how the charge changes, like because he goes, like he goes from having a positive charge to having no charge, because he's balanced by this.
I think how this helps in general is just showing like that the focus is on the whole molecule and how this is the unstable version. And like this one is very stable. And like this one is so unstable because he had that extra electron.
Yeah, like the negative charge doesn't apply to the O, it applies to the whole molecule.
The whole, yeah, I just, it reminds me I have to like yeah, I get caught up on little things sometimes. Oh man, come on.
We're just getting going.
Just figured it out.
That's right, I need to pee anyways, like let's take a little break.
Yeah, it's not on your headphone, it's
It's so loud.
Phew, first session done, how's everybody doing? Look, Jen, I'll fix my hair.
Set the holler for the
Howler rate timer, that was quick and alright. You get fifteen minutes.
Oh, so where's the holler? Alright, you ready?
For what?
I have to figure out how to, I, I always forget how to do this.
Graff tweeted, I wonder if these, these books are available for some work did, and I was like I've retired from the land and now my heart lives on the sea.
Oh, jeez. How do I do this?
Hi, Rodrigo, how's it going?
What are you looking for?
Trying to Just type me in up there. Uh, right now I'm doing some chem, I'm doing balancing oxidation reduction equations, electrochemistry, chemistry, oof.
I have a final next weekend, bio and chem.
Oh, it's right there.
Yeah. Is this the pirate guy you told me about?
Yes, click on him.
Okay, I'm gonna unmute this.
Yeah, it's Twitch, so I don't think you can copyright.
Copyright, just kidding. He's sailing the high seas.
I want him to do a cool pirate accent for you. Turn it for weird ocean waves. Alright, click on, go to she- uh, go to his channel. Hit him with a follow, I think he always does the thing when stuff happens.
Hit him with a what?
He's so cool.
I don't care.
I hosted him at four. He's been gone for eight hours.
Sixteen hours?
He's been live for sixteen hours. Damn, his alert doesn't go off. Oh, he's still doing kind of an accent. Yeah, pirate accent. Are you private account, so you're anonymous?
No, okay, okay, okay. When I do something, it comes on you. Are you do using voice mod like?
It's like, yes.
I love him.
He's really cool.
He's got really great energy too, especially for sixteen hours in, I was at eleven hour session, I was like, oh, so tired. Click my beard. He grabs his beard like this and pulls down a lot. But eh, you know, whatever. Alright.
Craft expects us to play Red Dead when he lied to us about Sea of Thieves, yeah, yesterday Craft was like, let's play Sea of Thieves. And then we started and then he was like, oh, I'm in this division red.
Do I click here now?
Yeah, you just hit reset. Yeah, the alert's gonna go off on. It's gonna go off over here, I think so. I have the alert set up.
What's Lex? That's Professor Sexette to you. What happened? It just went away.
I I don't know if it's gonna go off, I don't know if I set the alerts up for this. I think I just did it for follows. I wanted to gift Alexis gift sub, and I don't feel like a sugar daddy, sorry, non-sugar daddy. Yeah, you have to hit share.
I did.
Just hit it again. There.
Oh, yeah.
That's funny.
That's me.
Yes, so I guess I have the sound set up, but like the video alerts aren't playing.
Turn that off, copyright. Turn what off? What, him? Ah, I don't know how.
I didn't think about that when he was, he was singing loudly and I think all you could hear was him, but like now that his music's playing louder, I'm curious.
That's fine, whatever, don't care.
Her Twitch name is Assassin Saffron.
When you see it, it just looks like ass. Ass, 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 ass.
A lot of ass. I did, wow, seven whole months, hey? Wait, currently on a two month streak, so you missed a month somewhere in there twice, cause I'm at nine months. That's great, that's fantastic.
I have to pee during the breaks, so I better get. I'm gonna take the whole eight minutes sitting on the toilet.
I'll go ban it, hello, J K, I'm pretty sure she's a mod. Yeah, she's a mod, you can't but ban her, nice try. The water's getting warm, so you might as well swim. My world's on fire. How about yours? That's the way I like it. That's the way I like it. Oh, yes, he uses Corsair, this guy is so cute. That's the way, that's the way. I like it. Hey, here's the liar himself, Craft, hey, what's up Craft, how are you? Later, Ken, take care, good luck, thank you, Rodrigo, good to see you. Craft, what's up, man, what happened to you yesterday, I thought we were gonna pirate it up, and then you were busy being like. A dope stealth mission ninja. We did a tall tale and we did a legendary quest, we did an Ashen legendary quest, and I made Emmergy and Joe. Go through a Ashen legendary speed run. Your ship was full, my clan got done, damn, you you clan so hard, dude. I'm on warframe with a friend, why don't you two sloop it up right now? And do some of those tall tales you haven't done yet, so you don't have to be so scrubs, huh? I'm not kidding, I'm feeling Sea of Thieves right now, I am back in it to win it. Wanna max out those tall tails? The world's on fire, and how about yours? That's the way I like it, so you better get yours, so you'll never get bored. So you better get yours.
So get your shit.
Which tail are you on? I've done all the toe, I did find the shores of gold, the shores of gold. I did all the tails. Yesterday was my last tale that I hadn't done. And I know you can't unlock them all, but someone put down the shores of gold for me to vote on the other day, so I did do shores of gold. And then yesterday, the last one I had to do was Revenge of the Morning Star, and that's the one that Emmergy and Joe did with me. Which is funny because I don't think either of them can see that they did it, because they haven't unlocked the mission themselves yet. But once they get up there, if they ever do, it'll already be checked off, like it counts. But I did find the shores of gold. And I have all nine tails done, I haven't finished them all five times each, which is another commendation.
Sick, look at this.
Poke aim, who's this cheating asshole?
A drive.
Not A drive, I meant poke aim, with poke aim, like poke can.
Pokemon Go, Team Caliber.
So he has a game cap hooked up to his phone. Somehow.
It's like on his belt or something.
Well, no, he's got it plugged in, was he holding a selfie stick at the same time? Oh, he's not, he must be wearing. A stick poking out of his belt.
Yeah, well, like a stabilizer or something.
Oh, God, that's exhausting, he's walking around with like a big setup on his.
But then he, his phone is literally like.
You can, you can game cap, this is, this is the easy part for me, as far as like community date. Like. Well, actually, no, cause you'd have to have like. So he has a tablet or something that he's capped it to?
Yeah, and it's gotta have like literally like a self-stabilizing mechanism in it, because it's. Pretty smooth.
Go down alone, see if he has this like. Remote setup. Information in here.
Cool, huh? I'm so excited to place.
I just want to like see how he's doing it, I wanna know what his setup is. I finally found a new shield on my PC, one program using fifty-five gigs, using half of half of the One Drive, I don't have the space for that size pro, oh damn, I'm sorry. Craft, we can play Sea of Thieves then? Yeah, I'm really curious about how we, how we had, the game cap part, I, no problem, but like how is he streaming it to? Like he has a scene set up, so he has to have it going somewhere where he can organize the scene and get the game cap in on the scene, like I don't understand. He has so many emotes. Ugh, in a controversy, so much hot. Damn, I'm jelly, I wanna know what his setup is, I wanna know how he's doing this.
Just ta- just type him. Chat, chat him.
I don't think he's gonna smash up the details on his setup on that.
Send a DM.
Alright, break's over fam.
Break's over fam.
Me too, Craft, I just wanna be the very best. Alright, starting the timer. What, what is this about? Okay, I'll just slow down, I don't know what to talk about. Like, why is it sorting? And like, why isn't he up here? Like, I just saw this and I feel like a jackass, you know? Like. It's supposed to be a, you know? Okay, that's. That's all accurate, I guess. Don't understand. It's my landlord, like, you can tell his voice through three walls, it's hilarious. I think it's just one window. It's funny, it's sick. Okay. How much more, I can't see the difference.
It was twenty-eight. Guess we don't need our ocean sounds now.
That's a good point.
Can I send you twenty-seven twelve?
Sure. I was just gonna even out my account to a nice even number.
Sure, sure.
Oh, well, hell, you did buy breakfast this morning too, nevermind, just.
I'm at thirty-two twelve.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what's the best I can do about that?
Like, it gets you closer, at least.
Nonetheless, I didn't agree to the increased costs.
Of what? I love that.
The coffee also didn't cost five dollars.
That's true, so.
Merlin Katie cleaned your house and then bought you a two hundred dollar faucet, and then was like, you owe me two hundred dollars, and you're like, that's fucked.
No, I do.
Your ocean sounds are kinda loud.
Okay.
Is that better?
What's that?
That's my four twenty alert from Twitch.
It's a new one?
No it's four twenty a weed in the garden haul. That's poison ivy.
So you have two of poison ivies.
Who did that?
Who did that?
I'm Margie five dollar holler. Thank you for the study uh.
It's helping you out that monitor cost.
Helped me out that coffee. Thank you. It was I muahahaha. Thank you thank you for the coffee.
My my thank you.
Studying. I know we are having trouble getting started but we're going now.
The first round was good shit I wanna talk about.
Okay well jump back into it what's all this crap we're working on?
Why are you searching midget P O R N?
What? Oh what are you looking at? Okay I I see what.
Why are you searching daddy daughter swaps?
I don't have a good answer for you. Okay.
Daddy daughter swaps. That's a friend of mine's favorite type just makes me laugh.
Like what like a stepdaughter thing or what? Nevermind don't answer that.
Do you wanna look?
Nah.
Talk to her? What are you doing you've got to work.
Say your phone.
Yes.
The spontaneous direction it's predicting the direction. So these are gurk is where you can maybe determine which one is which but then this is the way to determine which.
Direction.
Yeah. More positive electrode potential attracts electrons more strongly. Oh wait a second. So this electrode has a negative electrode potential oh un-electrode has a negative potential. Which statement is correct regarding the potential energy of electrode at this electrode well this is the one we just the equation I just did. The voltage of the cell is two point six two. So wouldn't you say since it's a positive two point six two wouldn't it have lower potential energy? Like the higher it goes the less potential energy because it's.
I thought that's what you chose.
It is but right here it's saying the half reaction with the more positive electrode attracts electrons more strongly and undergoes reduction. Oh a more posi- no positive.
Yeah if it's more positive it attracts electrons cuz it's a buildup of a lot of positive charge there's lots and lots of you know it's like this it's got this.
So if I had a cell that was two point six.
He wants those to go over there to equalize it you know it all wants to be to a.
That makes perfect sense I was thinking here that if it has to have a negative potential it means it's more potential the more negative it gets. That's incorrect.
Oh okay okay.
This is incorrect it's this one this one has a really high potential because it has the potential to attract a lot of electrons because it's a positive two.
Yeah okay.
Okay. Okay yeah so more negative repels electrons more undergoes oxygen yeah okay. But up here it says helps to predict what's you just just read this nio perv and what's the first thing you think of?
Well I would I would put a V here.
Perv?
Yeah someone's a perv who Nicole is a perv. Do you know somebody named Nicole?
Nobody I don't know single person.
Sure. Why don't you say like. Sure, why don't you say like niantic, cause that's a Pokemon thing, niantic is a perv. Cause remember with the sleeping Snorlax event that just happened, they're all laying down like animals were like.
Piled up on his guts?
Yeah, would you remember that?
Maybe. Alright, we're in the right track, we're in the right track.
Ow, oh my knee just cracked.
Every day you come in here and you're some kind of like.
I'm getting older, okay?
You're not old.
No, I'm not old, I didn't say that, jeez, calm down.
Jeez. Take it easy.
Get taken older.
Do you mind walking me through these? Are we doing your word problems?
One out of thirty bruised. This is so hard, I'm not good at these, that's why it's like.
A solution contains both.
Okay.
Uh sodium iodide, sodium bromide, which oxidizing agent could you add to the solution to selectively oxidize? It's like. The ion by itself or these together? Cause it's asking to selectively oxidize.
It's like it's asking what's gonna be the stronger leaving group, like or like what's going to react? More with a s- like, okay, so.
So I've got sodium, sodium is in.
It goes. It goes like. This. Is. Weaker than this, weaker than this.
In regards to what?
Um.
Not cell believed.
Like it's as an as an acid.
Oh. Okay.
So like it's kinda saying like.
Chlorine is.
If you wanted to work with th- this more than that, you want like if that's a really strong acid, then you want the strongest base. I think, I don't know, that's what I would guess.
Cause these are. Is that that way you that's why you drew those out like that? Yeah, cause chlorine's the, oh was it the weakest?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Right as the strongest?
Like a weaker leaving group.
Oh, okay.
But it's a because it's a stronger.
Well chlorine's right there.
Oh, it's a weaker leaving group cause it's a stronger acid, so it's a smaller thing, it's like holding it tighter, so yeah, and if it's a s- stronger acid, but.
Yeah. Yeah.
Am I saying that right?
I thought fluorine was the strongest.
A worse leaving group.
Right, okay.
Cause it doesn't wanna leave.
It doesn't wanna leave.
This is easier easier leaving.
Easiest to leave. So the only thing, okay, so then it says just this would be the best option because chlorine it would be the strongest.
I don't think it would be chlorine, I think you need something that. Like this, for example, this is, well, that's a neutral compound, but it wants to. Well, that wants to get rid of that hydrogen.
Does it? I know it's one, it's normally the the.
So with the H, it's just an a neutral compound?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay, what about this one?
Call up your textbook and then look in this chapter, cause the answers to these problems are in there. Chapter is this nineteen. Did you find out if it's one of the thirty bruised? No, I'm still working on it.
Three to four not fit, oof, this is those are those like. Shitty word problems. Oh, that's outside. I think yours will be about really like stressful. Where are the answers to these?
So when you go to the very end of chapter nineteen.
Oh, it'll say conceptual connection.
Yeah, it'll say conceptual connec- connection answers.
I just wanna double check that we were right about that, so I'm gonna look him up. Let's see.
I feel weird.
Because the parent. The reduction of hydrogen with the reverse. The average unit is listed above it. Probably just like. It is not spontaneous because. It's listed above it. I don't know what it said. It does not dissolve in acid. I'm sure that is just written down. Dissolve in acids. While metals. Listed above. Dissolve. For the next section, symmetric acid. Which can oxidize metals. Sorry for. Touch. Half reduction. Surface sound. Can't only this one. Almost. Electric acid can so. This is. He is up there. Oh, so. I think he was up here. And it's the number of moles from the Don's to come incorporated in the atmosphere that he's caused. Oops, sorry.
What was that?
That was the end of the howler timer.
Oh. Okay, well let's set a break time.
Okay.
Okay. It's gotta go right until two so that you can do forty-five minutes and get ready for.
Yes.
Pokemans.
He solitary. Gonna cry, no more bugs. I told you we didn't have to do anywhere last night. How are you today? Did you have a good day of work? You have the mumbling educational words, it saddens me, oh my god. First thing I do when I become overlord of this world, hey, will you hire me as your P A? I would like to be personal assistant to overlord. Tickle bodsters. I'll be a black market book salesman, yeah, and I'm gonna be P A to the overlord, it's fine. What'd you say, Matt? It says message retracted, but then a smiley p- face. Gigi, I'm gonna lucky that switch, Joe, yeah, that's so cool, Joe, Gigi. Those people are idiots, that's true. You're hired, no interview, yes, will you buy my books? No questions asked. You wanna be a black market book salesman? Oh, solitary said once he becomes the leader of the world, he's gonna burn all the homework. And then M R G's like, yeah, I'll become a black market book salesman.
Lex is so bossy. Yeah, you like that? You don't like that?
Solitary, you still gotta try to put a lurk emote, but the site doesn't have one, so I deleted the message, oh, oh, sorry, Matt. I knew he's the one I dream of.
That is not what I was singing. That's funny. It's close though.
He said, there's a boy.
I know.
What were you singing?
Um, no, I can't remember.
Yep.
I should've said it. Sure. There's a boy I know.
Kinda got a heart leak last night but I started dinner. I ended my stream, started stream at nine and I was like, you guys, Twitch by ten, promise. I was like, car's supposed to be home by now but I'm gonna start dinner anyways 'cause they told me we're gonna make sandwiches and then he was just late. But I started them. So I made chicken, uh, brie and apple slaw sandwiches.
Hey, good for you.
Chicken breast.
That's like your favorite.
Yeah, it is. I made apple slaw. I chopped up an apple. I got some coleslaw and some honey, some apple cider vinegar, some salt and pepper and mixed it all together with mayo and made apple slaw.
Yeah, nice.
Yeah, I took out some chicken breasts, sliced up some brie. It's crazy.
Cool.
I got leftover apple slaw if you want one. Maybe after poker bands.
Yeah, maybe later. Yes. Check my answer, got it right? Mm-hmm. Cool. I got the first three wrong and the and the fourth one right, so thankfully I can do at least one right. Mmm. Guess I'll take a break. Don't trust your feelings. Oh, I know. I think that's the one. You lazy, remember? Haha. Lex could learn a thing from you about how to be lazy. I think she's happy in her non-laziness. Only a few people like care to have bossing me around. He puts up with me on a pirate ship. I was giving Joe so much shit last night too. I was like, what did I say? And then like all of them kept picking up food and like accidentally eating it. And I'd be like, no, you eat a bite of it, you can't sell it. And we're like, stop this. And like, they all did it. I'll give them all so much shit more. You guys are good sports. I'm very bossy in Pirate game.
And Red Dead too.
Was I pretty bossy in Red Dead?
I don't know. I feel like maybe I-
I kept starting missions but I didn't like boss people around as much. On Sea of Thieves, I get impatient. I'm like, let's fucking set sail. Like, what are we doing parked at this island? And I was just like off, searching around bushes for nothing. Like, guys, look at the fuck on the boat. We doomed. Fire. He legit sailed the entire galleon for us yesterday for like the first two hours and then I could tell he was getting fucking tired of it. So I was like, I'll drive for a bit. Cause galleons are so slow and obnoxious and like you have to s- like all three sails up and all three sails down and it gets really, really boring. Like if you're sloping or brigantining, it's easy to manage the ship. So you just raise him up, throw him down. But a galleon is just obnoxious. And I could tell he was getting like, like, really, I gotta drive and I gotta sail and I gotta He didn't say anything but I was like, I'll take over, give you a little break. I can only make it so long as like the captain before I'm like, can I just go on the island and kill some skeletons, please? Like, I just wanna fuck around for a second. Actually, I thought it was really cool 'cause um Joe and you and M R G, you guys were both just fishing the whole time? And like my hunters rep went up so much yesterday. Like, I never get on a crew with that many fishermen and it was actually really cool. Like, you guys caught a lot of really dope fish.
Hmm.
Cause that's the newest with the new update. That's the, oh my gosh, you know what? I need to clear out my decks, don't I?
Maybe.
Assigned tasks. I know, I'm not I'm not as good as the bossy thing as I should be. I just like wait for everybody to do it and then when they don't do it, I'm like, why aren't you reading my mind? Like classic female syndrome. I wasn't super like trying to get places yesterday except the tall tale. That was the only thing. And then at the end, I was like, can we just do this legendary? Cause we're halfway done. I'm fucking exhausted. But we did great, honestly. We made good time on that legendary. Like in the past, legendaries took three hours to do and we did that in like an hour. Like, we did good work. That's what I just said, M R G. You can't also call me out for my gender the second after I call myself out. Also, that's whatever sexist. Yeah, that's sexist. You, you sexist person who Got him. Got him.
How do I know? How do I know? Trust your feelings. How do I know? How do I know if he really loves me? See a prayer with every
Mr. Re- relearning the game and my bindings. Dude, Joe, I felt super bad for you cause you were like trying to figure out how to do the fishing thing and it was like key bindings and shit. It's like, fuck that. That's hard. That's hard shit. And then we like, honestly, like when I said was like, let's do Ashen reaches. I was like, oh yeah, great idea. I forgot how much shit those islands are. So there's a little corner of the map where if you Um, the cool thing about it is that if you do a quest in the Ashen reaches, there's only like ten islands you'll have to sail to and they're all in a row. Whereas normally there's like thirty islands and it's just a huge legendary hodgepodge across the map. So you have to spend like fifteen, twenty physical minutes sometimes sailing to and from islands. And it's like, I'm trying to cut out that extra half an hour of bullshit sails. Cause if you're in the ocean, at any moment a kraken could spawn and then you're trapped into like a fifteen minute battle. Or a megalodon, you know, so it's just like, I'm trying to avoid that shit. So if we do an Ashen reaches quest, we're not gonna get stuck with any of that cause we're sailing literally to the next island, you know? Like you could jump off the boat and get to the island without even a ship. Like, it's not a big deal. But like In my head, I was like, that's a great idea. Let's do it. And then we started it and I remembered why the Ashen reaches are so much hell. And it's because at any moment the island could literally just Uh, the volcano, there's a volcano. That's the difference. There's a volcano on every Ashen reach island. And at a moment, the volcano could go off. So there were like Gazers going off all, uh, geysers. I keep pronouncing it wrong. There were geysers going off on all the islands all the time. And if you step on top of it, it shoots you into the air. When you fall, you take damage. And then like I just kept getting like smashed into the air over and over and over again. It's like I'd get tossed around and then just die. We're like, cool, that was a great round, everybody. Puck. Like, so it was actually really hard and I forgot that. That's why a lot of people don't play over on that side of the map because it's actually a lot harder. I was like, hey, it's your guys' second day back after not playing three. Wanna go to the hardest part of the map and have a good time and Sounds like a great time. Let's do it, you know? It's just I need to I D check all these bad ones I've got. Oh god, timer's up. Break's over. Yeah, when he suggested it, I didn't think anything of it. And then as soon as we get there, I'm like, oh god, like the whole island's gonna explode. Like, I regret this. I feel really bad for you guys. I know, I know. I had a good time though. Like, I think three times in a row, I walked onto the island and then a skeleton blew me up with a barrel. And then I walked back onto the island and then a skeleton blew me up with a barrel. Like, in a row, I just
Just can't win.
Died for you.
So frustrating.
Yeah, Chris was in chat and he was like, what is happening to you? I was like, I literally don't know. I can't tell you. This is, this is my life now. Still, I woke up my shiny Puccina. And if you step on top of it, it shoots you into the air. When you fall, you take damage. And then like I just kept getting like smashed into the air over and over and over again. It's like I'd get tossed around and then just die. We're like, cool, that was a great round, everybody. Puck. Like, so it was actually really hard and I forgot that. That's why a lot of people don't play over on that side of the map because it's actually a lot harder. I was like, hey, it's your guys' second day back after not playing three. Wanna go to the hardest part of the map and have a good time and Sounds like a great time. Let's do it, you know? It's just I need to I D check all these bad ones I've got. Oh god, timer's up. Break's over. Yeah, when he suggested it, I didn't think anything of it. And then as soon as we get there, I'm like, oh god, like the whole island's gonna explode. Like, I regret this. I feel really bad for you guys. I know, I know. I had a good time though. Like, I think three times in a row, I walked onto the island and then a skeleton blew me up with a barrel. And then I walked back onto the island and then a skeleton blew me up with a barrel. Like, in a row, I just
Just can't win.
Died for you.
So frustrating.
Yeah, Chris was in chat and he was like, what is happening to you? I was like, I literally don't know. I can't tell you. This is, this is my life now. Still, I woke up my shiny Puccina. Shit, I really need to go through and clean out. I don't have enough space for shiny day today. Alright, last timer. Let's get to learning, y'all. Ah, excuse me. Ah, excuse me. Potentials from table nineteen one. Remember I like to add the letter when you're done? Hmm, so, okay. Okay. Here does that write down both varieties constant? It's my laundry reminder, that doesn't work. Okay. I c- I can't find the answer to this one. This is for practice nineteen point six. I just need to see if the, I don't.
Well, yeah, go back to the nineteen point six section.
Okay. It's this down here for practice. No, wait, that says nineteen point eight.
Use the tabulated electrode.
Okay.
There, right there.
Yeah, I did this, this is great, this is for practice nineteen point six, so it's a whole nether one.
Oh, I see, I see.
Do I, I mean.
No, it'll be at the very end.
Okay, so. So, okay, key learning outcomes, review questions. Problems by topic. Additional problems.
Mm-hmm.
Cumulative problems. Challenge problems. Conceptual problems. Questions for group work.
It's not listed by a.
Data interpretation and analysis.
By a number.
Answers to conceptual que- connections.
Oh, maybe that's it.
Hmm, it's another conceptual connection.
Well, then, well, three. Can't keep going, nineteen point six.
Yeah, that's, this is the answer to the conceptual connection question.
Is the reaction spontaneous? Does that relate or no?
I guess, but I wanna know the tabulated electrode potential to calculate delta G. Like this is, okay, so this is.
You won't, okay, I see.
If I click on that, it takes me here. But I guess that's, then, that's this conceptual connection question, this other question. Like I want to know. Example nineteen sevens, practice problem answer.
Oh. Well, no you don't, cause that says nineteen point six. That's weird. So it says nineteen point seven.
Well, it's just, here, it's this one up here. It's relate. Relating. Relating to the E cell, okay. No, no, one more. There it is. G cell and E cell, that's what this is. And here's the practice question nineteen six. This example nineteen six relating G cell and E cell. It makes sense to me, I just wanna double check I'm getting the right voltages for the E cell.
Right, 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 well. When it talks about, like, is that something that you can get elsewhere? When it says the example.
I didn't see anywhere example answers, cause they're right here, but this is like for practice, an extra example answer, but like, where's the answers for the?
Try Googling that. Something to do with that.
Yeah, I guess.
Someone else, in case someone else did it.
Don't select it. See here, it says use tabulated electrode potentials. It's like, okay, so the first step is to get. The E cells from the half reaction, that's fine, look, I've got the half reactions right here. This is in this table.
Mm-hmm.
N A to N A, it was two negative two point seven, but two H two O to H two plus two O H is not in this table anywhere. I just looked it up on Chegg, this guy's got an E cathode of negative point eight three volts.
Was the table you were looking at. An anode. Table?
Yeah, yeah, it's uh.
So what about a cathode table then?
No, this is an electrode potential table, sorry, but, so it's got H two O two plus two H, that's not it though, I need.
Okay, okay.
H two O two O H, like I need.
Okay, so what it, what's?
The one he had was negative point eight three, okay, so he's using this one.
There, yes, literally, yes.
Oh, it's the exact one.
But because it's going the opposite way, that's why you flip the. The, whatever, you know what I mean?
Okay, it's going the opposite way of the one I have. Well, earlier, in this one. This one has. Two B R to B R two, and it's listed here. At one point oh nine, it's B R two plus two E. To two B R, so it's going this way.
Yeah. So you flip.
I don't though. Right here, it's one point oh nine. And it's one point oh nine.
Because it's.
B R two plus two.
It's how is the table set up? S- so this. So the reduction's going this way. So.
Oh, it senses an oxidation. You just have to assume it will be backwards. But the voltage is the same.
Well, I'm not sure if I would say that exactly, but it's definitely like, it would flip the symbol if, so it said oxidizing. If this is an oxidizing agent, like this is how the table's set up. Meaning that's. It's the oxidizing agent, meaning it will be reduced. That's why it'll be backwards here.
Okay. I don't mind that. Title, as long as I know it's the same both ways, I didn't think I would have to look down there for this H two O, but I guess he's down here.
Well, and because he went through. So the table looks to be set up. So the table looks to be set up like so that oxidation is headed that way, but if what you have is. Like, reduction, if like the thing you have reduction, then you know that you'll need to flip the signal.
In this case, the reduction is the one going the correct way and the opposite. No, I've never had to flip the signal, even if it's going the opposite way, so far at all, using this table.
Okay.
It hasn't had me flip the signs.
Okay, well that might not apply then.
Negative point eight three.
Except it, except for just now though, didn't it? Did it have to flip?
Mm, no.
It was just, it just showed up elsewhere.
Yeah, it was just the other end, I think, maybe that's how it works. Sorry, thank you, I forgot to use that.
Oh.
Something magic totter. Now the E degree cell is equal to the E cathode minus the E and. I'm still, I'm so sorry, you're not getting anything done today, but. The value of N is the number of moles of electrons.
Okay.
It's the number of electrons that are cancelled in the half reactions, okay?
Okay.
So up here, the way I interpreted in this practice problem. It has two B R, B R two, two electrons.
Mm-hmm.
Here, I two, two electrons, two I. I don't understand, so I don't understand how at the end they have two moles here.
Okay, so because.
So this is one mole, this is two moles.
Mm-hmm.
This is two moles, and this is one mole.
Mm-hmm.
Three and three, I don't like, where's the two cancelled moles? Oh, corresponds to the number of electrons that are cancelled. Here, same, same story. He says there's two cancelled mo- electrons.
Okay, so that's this, two cancelled electrons, 'cause they cancel out, they're on, ones on their opposite side of the equation.
Okay, so this two right here.
Okay.
Is because those two cancel, if there were three up there and one down there.
You'd have to have a ratio, I guess. The number of electrons that are cancelled in the half reactions. That rings for me.
Okay.
Does that ring with what else you've seen?
This guy doesn't break it down into.
Okay.
But he also says there's two moles here.
Mm-hmm.
And here. Well, if I was to actually ha- if I was to have written it.
Mm-hmm.
According to this, it would be. Two H two O plus two E negative. Two electrons. So. Now, according to the, the table. This one had two, and this one had one. But this guy says the correct answer is to have two. And I mean, he's got no comments in forty-nine, thirty-nine pluses. Thirty-nine thumbs up, like this, I believe it to be right, I just don't.
Yeah, so N, N is the number of moles cancelled.
Electrons.
So the n- the number of moles of electrons, moles of electrons.
Oh. Well, so two electrons.
The number of.
Sure. But what about here, this is.
Or as far as to the number of electrons that are. The right end, the number of moles of electrons corresponds to the number of electrons that are cancelled in the half reactions. Which we had.
Okay. So for this one, it is two moles. Each of those displays a two on each side, so I could see them both being cancelled, but for this one, it's. This equation has the two H two O.
Mm.
Has two electrons here, but the N A only has one electron there.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I, am I supposed to assume? 'Cause I guess.
Um, no, no.
No, 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 'cause look, the cell reaction is two N A. And two N A positive. So, if this is what's given to me in the table. If I have two, do I assume two, you know what I'm saying?
Um, well, yeah, because you ha- you do have to ca- well, is that what you were given though, were you given two N A?
Yes.
Then yes.
But the table itself doesn't sh- like.
'Cause you, you wa- when you go to calculate, you're, you're gonna multiply it.
But I don't.
To make up for the mole conversion.
S- so, for example, this, in the.
So what he's doing here then with the N is literally like.
See in the. In this.
It's a molar conversion, that's gonna look like this. 'Cause you have two, like if you're going, think about it in more terms.
So on the table it gives me.
The one, all the one.
One and the one, right, neg- but it's negative two point seven one, but that doesn't change. That stays in the reaction, even if there's two.
Yeah, but then, exactly, but just like when we go from atoms to moles to grams. Between those two is the, the molar ratio conversion, like that's part of it, you know, when you have a thing, you like come down. Then you convert through the molar, and then you convert back up.
Or whatever.
Because you do have to take into account at some point that that number is going to be changed.
So when I'm determining E cell, I use the base volts for the base, so you see here he's using N A and N A.
Yeah, yeah.
But he still says there's two moles, which would make sense if there's two N A and two N A, you would assume two electrons.
'Cause in the half reaction, this is what's happening. That's the first half reaction, and that's like. That one, that's happening in the first, in the, excuse me, in the half reaction, right, but when you come down here and you actually figure out what the change is. You have to account that that reaction's gonna be happening twice. Because of it, it requires two moles, and here requires.
But I didn't. Sure.
Two moles, but it's accounted for back here.
Does this accounting for the two moles cover the discrepancy of the voltage only being measured based off of the one?
That's a good question.
'Cause the voltage was determined using.
I get, no, I get it, I'm, I'm with you on that.
Okay, okay, okay. Maybe, maybe the, the fact that you, you, you're covering your base because you're like, yes, that's the voltage for one. Equation, but you have two moles that were.
I guess, here though, it's two over two, like, everything has a molar thing of two.
Right, but this, the, the table had the twos in there for this one, like this one was t- for two. In this table, but in this, in the table, it only had, you know what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
And he calculated it as such.
Can you look up another practice problem or look at any of the comments?
There's no comments. I'm, I'm sure one of those is gonna be the same though, if you just click on that one maybe. Yeah.
Ow, crap, just pinched my finger.
First overall cell potential calculates. E cathode is a standard reduction potential.
Um, the equation that was used, like the delta prime G and all that.
Mm.
Type in that equation and see like, how do I use this, or like break this equation down?
Okay.
I think I would do that next.
It's the number of electrons participating in the reaction, F is third A constant, E cell's the overall cell potential.
Um, although this says.
That's not, I don't know that that's my biggest issue, the moles kind of make sense if you're counting. How many electrons are cancelled from each side, this made sense when you say. Well, you know, there's, there's two happening, so there's gotta be two elect- two like, you know, like, that makes sense to me. But I don't understand how you don't counter that into the voltage.
Well, and how wouldn't you know? If you were to re- do another problem just like that, like how would you know when, when to use the coefficients or not? Would like, would be my question.
Feels like they all have two, like two N. It's fine. Oh, yes.
I have four more problems to do, I'm gonna try and go through it, I might need to study a little bit more tonight.
I'd like to study some more tonight.
I only got through a couple of, like, the math sections, I wanted to finish those before I take the test tomorrow.
Okay, let me just try and blast through. Hell, yes, I feel great about those oxidation reactions now.
Can you do this again?
Yep, all yours. I'm probably, I said I was gonna stream on Twitch tonight, but I'm genuinely thinking about after.
Da-da-da, it's you babe, I'm a sucker for the way that you move. Let's see, I think I need to be ready for like tomorrow's thing. Just put, I need this. Alright, well. Gonna close it down, we're gonna switch over to Pokemon Go. Community Day, I think we're gonna stream it. Uh, we might get started a little late, but I gotta get set up for the cough. And uh, podcast isn't Mary's tonight, okay, six o'clock podcast. Potentially three thirty to five thirty Community Day here, but um. No promises, um. I gotta check, I think, I think we did wanna do that though, but I gotta find out what Cory's up to and what's going on, so. Thanks for hanging out, you guys, it was awesome, um, for sure podcast at Mary's, probably Community Day in the car. Stay tuned, bye.